We're live. Okay. Welcome everyone, tonight is our Select Board meeting. July 6, 2022. The board will be going into executive session at at 6:46 and the board will be returning to open session at the end of executive session. Make a motion, we go into executive session. I, William Benbury.
Can I, I'm gonna, we gotta do the exact language for the motion.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion if you want. I'll make the motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30a, Section 21a2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the chief police, fire chief and town administrator. And it is declared that it's needed. So if you want to call the roll down, that's the motion.
Until the second?
Second. I, William Benbury.
And I, Scott Bastarash.
Welcome back. We resumed the Select Board meeting at 7:40 p.m. Just announced that we have ratified amendment language to the fire chief, police chief, and town administrator contracts. Next topic is discussion regarding town response to COVID-19.
I have no concerns.
Okay.
Did you see the new?
I did not see them yet. I saw they came in. Did you?
It's a whole different format.
Oh, it is?
The new one. Yeah. Yeah, I was trying to read through it, and at least they gave some, here's how I'm interpreting this information. And there was, you know, it's a whole different format, and they're giving us even more information. There's test information, not just cases, but test information, death information. So it's a little more in-depth, which is good. But it was a lot to try and decipher about how, you know, what is the percent increase? Yeah, see what I mean?
What does that mean for Irving specific?
Yeah, that's county data. That's not Irving. So page three.
Irving is still 2-2.
Right. We still have just the counts, but then the tabulations are done a little bit differently.
Visual is probably better over time when we get used to it.
Yeah. But the end result is it's still looking at Franklin County as a low risk.
Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Review of the renewal agreement for the co-responder clinician services with clinical support options and intermunicipal agreements.
Hold that for one more week.
Can?
We're just trying to finish a few more details on that, but everything is looking like we're ready to serve that renewal.
Yeah, okay.
Suggesting some of those outstanding.
Yep.
Clerical things. Discussion regarding hiring of patrol officers. The update I have at the moment is William Kimball accepted the part-time offer and is going through pre-employment currently. And Officer Laura Gordon accepted and started this week and is in field training. I don't believe I have anything else on that topic at the moment, gentlemen?
No.
No concerns.
Okay. Review of the sexual harassment prevention policy, second read. Any comments, concerns, proposed edits?
I don't think it was that one. I think it was the other one I had edits to. I made a note here. Hold on one second. No, it was the other one.
Okay. I don't either, so moving to the other one. Review of the protected class harassment prevention policy, second read.
I think the only edit I had is, Brian, we had discussed early on when we were drafting this. Forgive me, I gotta find where I made the change. Under Section 5, Examples of Conduct.
Okay.
We were changing out the his/her, and there was still a couple in there.
Got it. I'll make those corrections.
Just keeping it more general. That was it.
Good catch.
I think you had gotten everything else that we had discussed when we wrote it.
Okay, I'll make that correction.
Yep. I think there was only two times in that section. Everything else looked good.
I didn't have anything. You?
Nope.
Okay. We'll bring back those adjustments for a third read next meeting. Meeting minutes from June 14, 2021.
Make a motion to accept June 14, 2021, meeting minutes as written.
A second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Meeting minutes from June 22, 2022.
Motion to accept meeting minutes June 21, 2022, as written.
June?
22nd.
22nd.
Yep.
Yep.
I will second June 22, 2022.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're passing over June 21, 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It's on there, but we're passing that one over. FY22 Reserve Fund Transfer Requests. Explain what we're doing.
Yes.
This is where we retracted one of our last two meetings. We retracted all the open ones, or most of them, from the last fiscal year, and these are effectively in their place for last year.
Correct.
So one is the newer annual audit. We used to fund it on a three-year cycle, and we had to do it a year into '22 instead of '21 because of timing, so that's for $15,000. Second request is for Arch Street 4, Sur Main. For the interest, short-term interest obligation before the permanent borrowing was executed on the amount of $11,180.15, which can't be paid from the long-term funding. And then the third was for maintenance of the UV equipment at POTW number one that had a significant failure over the winter. It took a while to get the replacement parts, to bring it back online, and then also to put some on the shelf for future. So that amount was $17,073.52. Any questions, concerns, comments on those three?
Not on those, but on the follow-up documents that we will be submitting to the Finance Committee. Just can you give me some clarity on the present balance in? It's the last one, the 1707, 352.
On why it's negative?
Yeah.
So negative?
Just some clarity, yeah, clarity on that.
So there's two transactions right now. Those amounts have already been charged to this line item, so that $17,000 that we're asking for has already been accounted for in that balance.
In that minus, okay. That's what I was asking. That was already applied to put it there.
So that'll bring it down towards zero, sort of 14 or?
Right. It'll be negative 13 and change or whatever, yeah.
There's an additional, POTW number one's generator head unexpectedly died, I want to say, the October before, maybe on Halloween, and the delay in receiving the parts and installation took up a year. So there was a rental generator that needed to be online to keep the plant running in case there was anything happening until last September. So there's a tail end of an unexpected generator cost for the rental until the new one was operational and in service again. There's a tail end of that. So there was a transaction that we are moving to the special article, so that will further reduce that.
Okay.
But those are the larger contributing issues.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, the generator rental was expected to wrap up around the end of the fiscal year, and we carried it three months.
September, yeah.
So it was another $16,000, I want to say.
Yeah.
So it sums up about the negative. Anything else on those?
Do you need a motion for those, or do you want to just move the requests that are to the Finance Committee?
I'd prefer a motion to approve them, and I'll sign and submit them.
All right. You want them individually? Your preference. I don't care either way.
I think together is fine, yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022 Reserve Fund Transfer Requests. Three requests in the amounts of $15,000, $11,180.15, and $17,073.52.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of the Decorative Light Repair Procurement.
Yeah.
This afternoon. So we attempted to solicit a quote from four vendors. Requirement is at least three. Solicited at least three. One declined, one, two didn't respond, and one offered a proposal in the amount of $17,872, and that was Amp Electric Incorporated out of West Springfield, Mass.
Correct.
I'm just gonna ask, we had the recent pole that was, I don't even know, broke, damaged, taken out, it fell over.
Run over?
Run over, yeah. That's not inclusive.
No, that's a separate repair that we have to do through insurance.
Right.
Okay, got it.
The challenge is going to be finding a replacement pole that matches from 23 years ago, when you procured these. We have one in storage, but we already have another one that has to be replaced, so we're on the lookout to try to find parts for that. Otherwise, we'll have to settle for something as close as possible.
If we can't find one, is it possible that we move one from a different area of East Main where it's, or West Main where there's a lot of them in succession and a?
Yep. That's another choice.
Straightaway, I guess I'll say.
Yep. I was gonna say, you could even take one off the far western end. Just take the last one off the run.
Western end?
Eastern end, sorry.
And that's kind of what I'm thinking, or take one out of that row. That's a possibility. There's a lot on the east end of, where the sidewalk is not.
Correct.
So.
Yes.
Okay, well, let us know if we can't find one before we get an alternate as close as possible.
Right.
If we find an exact match, then go ahead.
The focus on this procurement, there was more than we could do with the existing appropriation, so we had to focus on the priorities on the list that was generated by Time Bond when they did the feasibility last year. So this is going to focus on improving the circuit breakers in the cabinet, replacing all the photoise so that they're code compliant and functioning properly. Some are day burning, some are not burning at all, so to repair that. This replaces two handholds that are showing signs of failure, and it also will rewire each of the external outlets on every one of the poles, get them code compliant and get them safe for operation, make sure they're grounded properly, and they have the GFCI faults, just in case some water gets into any of those. So it's going to bring all of that back up to code, and then we'll have, obviously, the pole that you just talked about that needs to replace, and I think there are three retrofit kits that we need to acquire, but we're going to do those separately.
Okay.
But we'll at least get everything safe and working properly again.
Any questions, concerns?
No concerns.
Yes.
So this is the lights in Irving Center you're talking about?
Yes. Correct.
That have been out forever. So what's the timeline of when they might be functional and working again? Is there?
Okay, there's Sunday.
Yeah, please.
We put in the procurement that we're looking to have these operational by the end of the summer, with the understanding that the supply chain issues have been beyond what any normal contractor has been able to agree to, and many of their jobs have already been extended. So when we met with the contractors, we asked for it to be as soon as possible, with the understanding that we may have to wait in line behind any other clients that may already be affected. So the goal is the summer, but it could stretch to September. We're going to try our best to avoid that, and most of the work that we are focusing on should not be specialty parts. These should be standard parts that they should be able to obtain locally, but we do, I know.
It's also not 100% of what they need. It's a portion.
Right.
You know, there's likely going to be more to do after, but hopefully this gets them to a much better place than where they are today and
Absolutely.
sets us up for a following repair to wrap it up.
And we have the next list of work that needs to be done. So assuming this gets the initial safety concerns and the operational concerns addressed, we can go back to the drawing board, come up with a scope of work, try to price it. If it fits within the existing appropriation, we can move forward, and if not, we can prepare to go back to town meeting.
And we can take what they see when they do this and?
They will likely learn more as they go through.
Unfortunately, probably define
More work.
a more detailed scope, we'll just say.
Yeah.
For the next phase. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion that we award the electrician services for streetlight repair to Amp Electric Incorporated out of West Springfield in the amount of $17,872.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hold on, let me add one more thing, because we gotta authorize Brian Smith.
Yes, we do.
Town Administrator to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As soon as we vote it, he's gonna ask me to amend it anyway.
Or provide it to us to sign.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Review of Select Board Meeting Participation Guidance Draft. Yeah, I think we've all at different times talked about, for lack of a better word, setting ground rules, and the more that this is broadcast and different formats that we've used over the last few years, it just lends to a little more organization to ensure that anyone watching or reviewing later has a better ability to follow the events of the meeting. So I think that's some of the background to it. I was thinking of it a little bit more as a first read and then come back to it, but I don't know where you gentlemen are at on it.
I read it. I don't have any concerns with it. It's all of the same principles that we use now anyways. We're just codifying it into a document.
I as well have no concern. I read it, and I assume it will be posted online for everyone, and maybe it can go out in the Around Town Newsletter on the next one, so.
We were gonna post it online. We're gonna make sure it's available at the table over here as people are coming into the meetings, but if you would also like it in the Around Town, we could absolutely do that.
I think it's a good idea.
Just one suggestion. If you're printing up, you could make it part of the agenda packet every time as the second page beyond, after the agenda.
Yeah.
And when we're printing up copies for here on the table, it's just the backside of the agenda is this, and that way it's just always there. Somebody can read it and understand it and?
Yeah, I could format it to get it back on the one page. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, if you don't need all of the headings and everything, you should be able to get it on, well. Yeah.
Consolidate some of the bullets maybe or something.
Six font, get out the magnifying glass. All right.
Yep.
The only thing that I thought of adding to it was, you know, when a topic must be submitted for potential consideration for the following week's meeting, but not when the supporting materials are due. And you, I would argue that without them, you come off the agenda, even if you were on it, because you don't.
Right.
Generally, getting the meeting materials Monday afternoon on a Monday night meeting is not conducive to giving us a good opportunity to review and thoroughly think through what we're going to discuss versus having it by Thursday at noon.
I was gonna say, either Thursday or pushing it at latest Friday to give the weekend.
I'd like Thursday and then Friday is the maybe, because Thursday, then the chair can coordinate with Brian before he posts and determine if we're going to keep it on or take it off, depending on what it is and when we expect the materials.
That makes sense. So I will?
Maybe just add to the end of that sentence, you know, request submitted, and then supporting information, you know, is due Thursday at noon or may be removed from the agenda.
Right, okay.
I think that's, you keep it short, right?
Yep, I'll make that adjustment. The only other thing that this suggested was in bullet 2, so bullet B, adding on to the agenda, a section, the topic's not anticipated. We sort of referenced at the footer of all your agendas that things not known 48 hours in advance may be discussed, but if you actually wanted a space where people knew, that's where they may be able to bring something forward to you.
Instead of leaving it as a note at the bottom, embedding it as a topic.
Actually giving it a topic space.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. We could always put it up in the scheduled section, you know.
For your business.
Whatever, either end of meeting or as a standing. Yeah, wherever, whatever time slot we decide. So we're good with it? We'll have just that one amendment, and then we'll publish it? Okay. And we'll come back to reorg. We'll do that at the end. The FY23 business, just to?
Yep.
Keep it simple for tonight's meeting. Discussion regarding town bylaw codification product? Uh, product. Discussion regarding town bylaw codification product, uh, product, not quite yet, project. So this has been ongoing for over a year now.
Yep.
To have our code reviewed by general code and work with the town clerk and other departments to. Review and offer suggestions for changes or recommendations where statutes. Or other laws have changed since they were adopted for adjustment. And then to codify the balance, so it's cleaner, easier. Et cetera.
The town clerk and I wanted to bring this back to the three of you. Because it has been about a year since we've started to receive information back from the vendor. This went first to town council and then it went to the planning board. Their process is much longer than, than the rest of the procedures we have to follow. They completed their work, I want to say in March with a public hearing. So, so the planning board portions are ready to go forward. So now we would like to bring the rest of the, the draft town code to the three of you for review. There's a draft of the actual document. But it's, it's truly a draft format because there's this workbook that goes along with it. That recommends edits, to the chairman's point, there may be statutory changes that have happened over the last 150 years. That some earlier bylaws may not be in compliance with, so we need to make an amendment. Or there may be something that's ambiguous or not clear, and so they may be offering a recommendation on how you could clarify that language. So we just need to go through this workbook, give them what the recommended edits are from the three of you. They will then incorporate that work into a final redline copy that we'll get back. So the citizens would have that guide to go through and see line by line what's recommended to be changed, a clean copy as well. And then that's what we would bring to town meeting, when you all feel it's ready to present to the voters. And then the product at the end of this will be one finalized bound code of all your bylaws. As well as an online searchable database of all the bylaws. That will be accessible right off the town website.
And so the plan is once this project is codified and voted on and ratified. Periodic adjustment to it?
Annually.
Annually.
Any changes that you all make, as of right now, every time you have a town meeting, they get a copy of any bylaws. Local adoption and work that you do, they're even scanning the special legislation work that we have done at the state level. And those are all getting added to the different appropriate sections.
Okay.
So there's a, you all added a software maintenance line to the town clerk's office, I think two years ago. Part of that was, I think, a $1,200 fee for those annual updates. So going forward, when we bring a bylaw to the citizens, it won't be just the language of the bylaw. It will actually be recommended addition chapter 200 and it will be called this and the sections will look exactly like this. So the citizens will see the language, but they will also see the chapters and sections exactly as it will appear in the code.
Okay.
So it's adopting a bylaw that will be on such section page of our town code?
Correct. And to avoid future, you all have a style for the way you present to the citizens, your chapter and section approach. Previous boards had definition or did not, some, some of your bylaws are two sentences. So it will create a uniform approach going forward.
And. Mr. Newton, has that document ready, the workbook ready now or?
It is already set up in an email ready to send to you tonight.
Hit send. Some light reading.
How many pages is it? Let me ask you that. Just thinking about how we go through.
Manual itself is about 160 pages.
Okay.
But again, a large section of it, probably about 50 of those items were zoning related items.
Right.
So you should definitely review them, but again, the planning board has already held their planning board hearing process on those items. The other items are a mix of bylaws as well as some regulations. I would encourage the three of you just to focus on the bylaws for now. Those are the things that are the most time consuming, that we must go through the legal review and bring to the voters. The regulations could be done at a later date. Those are more regulatory board approvals. The Board of Health may be able to update a regulation at a posted meeting of the Board of Health. So we, we want to try to work with whatever speed you feel makes sense for your review. In a path that allows the town clerk to get back to the vendor. They're probably going to need two months with it to get it into a format that they feel is ready for presentation. Council needs to go back through it again and then get ready for town meeting whenever you think is the appropriate time for town meeting.
So do you all want to get a look at what it is before we decide how we're going to maybe work through it? I mean, we're going to understand the scope.
Yeah, at least get a first read on all of it and we can come back. If you want to, hit that send button, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah. Tomorrow or later. Yeah, I was just, initially had been thinking of something like taking batches and saying, okay. Let's all review them and come back with. To have the action dialogue as opposed to, just because it's going to be a lot to get through, I think. If we can do a lot of it ahead of time and come back with them. If we have a quick discussion, well, thoughtful discussion about what's there and what makes sense.
Would you want the town clerk to attend your next meeting? So that you can discuss any substantive issues around how to approach this review? He's available for your next meeting, if you'd like that.
I don't know if we'll know at that point.
Okay.
It might be, I don't know, I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I don't, I'd like to look at it first.
Yeah.
So as soon as you guys get it, let me know myself or the town clerk if you have any questions. And we'll respond to each of you with whatever it is you need for information.
At a future meeting, if we'd like him to join to talk through what some of the recommendations are or what they mean, if, you know, his expertise, then we'll schedule it with him.
He's available to meet individually if we need to, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Sounds like a start to a plan. Review of the draft sewer system evaluation survey. Pete, would you like to come up, just in case we have questions and then we might be considering your unexpected business after that anyway? So this was a smoke and dye test for INI?
Yes.
On our system? That DEP was recommending slash requiring from one of our last assessments?
Correct.
And this was only the two areas, correct? Area one, area three?
Yes.
It wasn't the full system?
Um, no, it didn't include fire rate.
Okay.
Will it at a later date?
I'm pretty sure it will at some point, because it is part of our systems. At this point in time, they focused on the two larger ends.
So the whole firey system basically and. Like the Prospect Street area that feeds directly into the pump station near. That facility are the sections that were not done yet.
Correct. They were concentrating first on where we would probably have the largest problem of INI.
Nearly 90% of the footage, right?
Correct.
Just on that topic, do we have additional funding to do the balance at some point? Or is that going to be a separate? Do we have it already?
That would be a separate, right?
Funding for future.
For future?
For part B.
At this moment, we've only done the funding for the study.
Right.
But there's not enough, there's not remaining money in the study money to do the balance of the system that was not done yet.
Let me see the last time we got those on this.
And you can take your time, it was just kind of a looking forward.
I don't believe there was for some reason.
So, I was just going to say, just a large, you know, overview. There's, they found positive inflow in four locations.
Correct.
About 1,400 gallons a day estimated from those. And then suspect inflow in other locations. Catch basins, roof leaders. And so the part B that I had mentioned earlier. Is their recommendation for follow up on those suspect and as well as. Any, any other additional work that may come up or did I read that right?
Yes. For the residential sections where there was suspected issues. That was, the recommendation from the Time Bond was to deal with those after we get through the COVID. Dilemma.
Right.
Because, you know, access to people's houses if we need to look at something, you know, at this point in time. I'm sure a lot of people are uncomfortable.
Yeah, there's, there's a few with open clean outs, you got to cap those.
Yep.
And I believe the follow up. Sort of put a recommended timeline of within the next five years.
Correct.
It's not a, it's not an exigent, you know, need that we have to correct all these this year. It's not, you know, our flow, our infiltration or, or inflow is low enough where it's not.
Very, very minimal.
Yeah, 1,400 gallons in, for the amount of. That we process is minimal.
The number of, the number of site. Concerned areas seem very small considering the miles and miles of.
Correct, they found very specific pinpointed addresses, locations. And they seem to be fairly. On the surface, simple corrections. Nothing, nothing too over the top. The question I do have though is, it talks about working with the property owners. Those open clean outs, they are the, the property owner's property, correct? The connections that were, that were, they were connected into the sewer system where they should not be.
Right, some houses, the clean outs, I believe that they're talking about are like, some houses, they have a long sewer run. A lot of people recommend when you put a new sewer line to a house or whatever, every 75 feet or so, put a clean out, a sweep. I do believe a couple were just, just in case of missing caps.
Right.
So, I mean, that's.
It's just allowing runoff water in and.
Correct, rainwater goes in, that's where you get that inflow.
So Pete, how, how do we go about notifying residential homeowners on how to correct inefficiencies? Such as the, the some pump going into the sewer system?
Well, I mean, we could do letters left at the doors, we've, we've done that. Prior to the smoke and dye tests and the company has, we've done letters before when we had, you know, like the Flag Hill project going on. So that would be probably our, our best way of approaching that. And hopefully, you know, the residents will correct the, the problems.
Is there any requirement that they correct it? Any timetable for correction?
That's, that's a kind of a gray area.
Can I interrupt for one second, just because I didn't, I didn't follow. Are we talking about the few sites that were cited as concern out of this testing or are we talking about phase B? I'm assuming, I don't know what your question was, was it about the current findings?
Um, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Right. I, I, I imagine I would probably get together with Brian and we'll, we'll come up with a letter to address the issues. At the residential sites and ask them if they could help the town out and fix those issues.
The first step is if the three of you feel like this plan represents the work that you want to report to DEP. Getting this on file with DEP so that we've met our requirement to study the potential INI issues within the system. The secondary phase, I think, is what Pete's talking about, that there are potential locations that have already been identified. Many of them are probably very simple corrections that, once we are able to communicate with the property owners, work on a solution. If you do encounter a property owner that does not want to engage with the town on making this correction. I think we'd have to deal with those on a case by case basis.
Right.
At the end of the day, there are regulatory requirements to disconnect any gray water. Or other matter that's going into the sewer system that's not supposed to be going into the sanitary system. And so if we have to separate those out and they're not willing to have that conversation, we may have to try a different approach. But I don't think that's the normal experience, I think many people may not realize that there's an issue. And if we're just able to reach out to them and have that conversation, I'm, I'm sure we're going to be able to make some inroads on this. It's not a, a large number of properties. And if we can get through those two steps, I think then moving on to phase B. To do the next level of, of study and review on the, the INI potential. Another potential may be to just start some type of proactive. Information campaign to the residents, either through the around town, through the website, just about what to look for. Some folks purchasing their homes may not realize that they have an older connection to the system that shouldn't be connected that way. And so just getting that awareness out there may be useful. So there's probably some materials that we can generate to, to get out to the community.
And I think, if I'm following the analysis, so that's. 1,400 gallons. Assumed from these. Four, five.
Four locations, yeah.
There's, there was church street question mark on something as well.
Correct.
Further, further investigation, but that's not. One and a half, one and a quarter percent of the estimated INI from 2018 that's coming into the plants, right?
Correct.
So between the five-ish thousand. Feet of pipe we didn't test yet.
Right.
And other potential connections that are not allowed. Is the bulk of that INI is assumed. So 108,000 gallons, we found 1,400 of it, we think.
Right.
So 106,000 plus. Of it is still out there and according to this, the potential sources would be. Kind of what you were alluding to, other gray water, other basement connections, some pumps, things like that that would not be. They're not allowed, but may be connected.
It's quite possible, yes, a lot of the older houses probably have some pumps. And, and that would be the. The goal would be to hopefully get as many people as we can to disconnect those. The clean out covers, that's added rainfall. I think that would benefit the residents also to, to cap those off, because who knows what could go down there and fund their sewer line, so. You know, a lot of it's common sense, little fixes, relatively easy.
If I'm following the recommendation though, there's, they would recommend a phase B study that would look at. It sounds like would propose to work with. All of the building owners to, or homeowners, et cetera.
Yes.
To look for the other sources of INI. Which is anticipated to look at the bulk of what was there, because we didn't find it in other outside connections, right? See, and that's a few, that's like a phase B, that's what I'm looking at.
I'm looking at the report now.
And the cost on that was pretty high.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Just for testing.
Is. You're looking to submit this to the state, so we can show that we've completed our first step. Although the table EX dash two, which talks about estimated phase B costs. By submitting this, we're not agreeing to any of those estimates, correct?
In terms of.
The phase B.
So the reason. Part of the phase B, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Mine's, and Pete, correct me if you have a different understanding of this. My understanding of what DEP is looking for. Decades ago, when they regulated the separation of the sanitary sewer system from the stormwater system, from the household connections. There was meant to be a certain level of compliance. Now that we're several decades into it, we're realizing we're still having INI going into the system. So they've been requiring these, every so often studies, you did the last one, I think in 2018. So they've been requiring these, every so often studies, you did the last one, I think in 2018. This was the requirement out of that study. So they're going to keep pushing towns to make further inroads on that INI problem. I think it's important that we have stated goals and some potential areas to, to specifically target for our efforts. Some of this is, is something that has to be funded at town meeting. Some of this is stuff that we may get out to the sites and work with individuals and find out what was maybe anticipated is not actually what we're finding in the field. So there may have to be another approach or another part of the, the study that we need to look at. So I, I believe these are intentions based on the knowledge that exists today, based on the study that's been conducted, reasonable assumptions. But is it subject to change? Is it subject to funding? Is it subject to all those things? That's true. So the three of you, I don't believe are going to be held to a standard that you can't meet. But the expectation is that we're continuously moving the town towards compliance.
Yeah, I get that. The only question I have is I was looking at one of the line items in there and it's. The preparation of the presentation. You know, it's a, it's a.
The report prep?
It, it's a lengthy document and, but $22,000 to put together a 60-page document seems a bit high.
Agreed. And there may be a lot of this we can do in-house.
Yeah, you know, I mean, if I will pick up a part-time job, putting it together for 60, for 22,000 dollars.
There, there was.
I'll do it for 20.
There were some other DEP requirements that Pete was working on the other day that, that firms are happy to help towns with and provide for a service. But the reality was we had the capacity to do it in-house and so Pete took care of it in-house. So I think there's some of these items that if it works within our capacity to do in-house, we will. But there are some technical pieces that we would have to rely on a professional for.
No, I, I was just saying in that section that by submitting this, we're, we're not agreeing to anything. This is just their estimation. Should we move in that direction?
Correct. So I'm going to put a footnote on that by the highlighted section that I'm reading, which goes back to the five-year comment, which I think was not to fixing the four or five identified items, but actually to doing phase B.
Yeah.
It says you're going to do phase, we plan to do phase B within five years, pending COVID. Which was 450 approximate buildings, die tests, and what I didn't say, just for clarity, was 260 manhole tests as well. For INI at the man, at the manhole. To the tune of an estimated $120,000 at the moment. So are we signing up for the dollar amount? I don't think so, but we're signing up for the work.
Right.
At some point in the next five years is what I'm reading.
Right, and that's, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're sending it to the state saying we intend, we've done this, we intend to do phase B. But I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently locking ourselves into an estimated phase cost.
No.
Okay. We haven't negotiated that, we haven't seen the scope before, this isn't, I just want to make sure this is just a, hey, if you go with us for this.
Correct.
This is what we're projecting it might be.
If you were to continue to engage with this particular engineering firm on this, you would likely expect that they're going to take this source document.
And, yeah.
As the framework for their proposal.
Yeah.
But again, I think there's a certain amount of in-house work that we need to go through and say, these are things that we reasonably can do with our existing staff. These are the pieces that an outside contractor need to be responsible for.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Just. Just clarity on that. So do you.
So the items that they found though, just back to the first list from phase A, we'll call it, right? The five areas of concern along with some suspected areas and one manhole that they observed may need some. I don't, investigation that we can probably do, right? So am I correct to assume most of these things are stuff that we can handle in-house in terms of addressing or working to address the findings from phase A?
I would say yes, except for probably the, a couple of town-owned buildings. Pleasant Street. One on Pleasant Street and. The elementary school.
Except for, meaning what? We can't address those or we?
We could. I mean, we, we could die in the roof drains and see where it comes out, but if something has to be changed, if that's not been fixed, that's, you know.
Can I clarify something? I thought you were asking about the positive inflow that were found through smoke testing. We're talking about 145 North, Seven Gun, 23 Forest Street and 27 Forest Street. Just those, not the anticipated and doing additional smoking and, and all of that. We're talking about the ones that were already found as positive results are those things that we could in-house start to address. Yeah, that's, it's just four residents and I think you said a possible manhole on church.
Right.
On Mountain.
Or Mountain, yeah.
Mountain Road, Mountain Road. But I actually did mean the other four.
Oh, you did.
I did, it was a question of like, so that was suspected areas. There was about 10, 13 locations where there were suspected as well.
Yeah.
Again, I think you meant, and I'll speculate, if one of those locations was a school and it's a flat roof and there's roof drains, that's something that was cited was flat roof, roof drains could be a concern. So is that something that we can do at least some follow-up on? Maybe we don't solve them, but at least we step them forward.
We need to understand what's causing it.
No, that's fine.
If it needs to be a capital repair that exceeds an existing appropriation, we have to go through the process like every other process that we do for the town. So yeah, so we'll be working on those pieces and in terms of 18 Pleasant, that's another property that we're looking to. Transition to a new owner in the coming months. So that would be something that we'd work on during the purchase and sale process that, that disconnection must be accomplished during the, the reuse of the property, the redevelopment of the property.
Right, yep.
So we can make progress on those other 13 areas to some degree?
Of course.
Okay, that's kind of what I was getting at. They talk about more, more dye testing and things like that. Do we have to have a phase A two to do that or can we do a lot of that? And it sounds like we can do a lot of it.
We can do some of it.
At least to get to a point.
If there's certain things that either it has a technical piece that we don't have that expertise in-house, we'll obviously come back to the three of you if that's something that we need to, to outsource.
Right.
Or if there's a preference to have it be an outside vendor for whatever reason. If they're, if they're going to be working one-on-one with the residents, some people prefer that. So if, if there's any reason like that, that it makes sense to make that recommendation, we'll bring up a proposal back to the three of you. So you have that cost and then you can make an informed decision.
Okay, that answered my question. Any other questions or concerns?
None.
Are we good submitting this to DEP?
I am, I was just gonna ask if you need a motion to move that forward?
Or just. There was a requirement from DEP that you noted on that, but having your authorization to submit it is what we need. This is technically considered a draft document, though it's mostly in the final format unless there was a significant change the three of you wanted. So my understanding is if we tell engineers tomorrow that this is ready to be filed, they will update the draft language to be final and, and it's ready for submission.
So that's not like, no, we don't have to, but yes, we probably better if we did.
However, the three of you.
If it moves along, rather than just discussing it, I'll just make a motion. I'll make a motion that we file with DEP, the Town of Irving Sewer System Evaluation Survey, completed by Ty and Bond dated June 17th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Much quicker than discussing whether we should or not.
Thank you, that's what I was getting at. And then if the board. Is willing to. Entertain and review, we had a. Failure, I guess I'll say. Of our. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Of our air conditioning system.
Correct.
The POTW, so if you want to fill us in.
Sure, it's original AC unit, it's a Mitsubishi unit, it's been there since 08, 09 when the upgrade was done. And we've had, we've had it serviced. Every year we, we get a service before the start of the summer. They're coming into service this week and the AC stopped working. So the importance of it, the, the main part of it is the mice have gotten in there, they chewed up the condenser board, chewed up the wires. So those would have to be replaced. And the other thing that I talked about with the vendor was. For some reason, when they did this in the beginning, they, they mounted this unit on the ground, which makes it even easier for mice to get in. So his recommendation is mounted it with some wall hangers, get it up off the ground. Being on the ground when winter comes, the mice are looking for places to go, the unit's warm and they, they like to get in there. We have to have an AC unit for the lab, we have to heat it down to 21 degrees Celsius. And that one unit controls the, the head that's in the lab, plus the office, plus the break room. So. It's a. Just, we, we need to get it fixed.
So this proposal's move it up off the ground and replace the whole thing?
Replacing the condenser boards, the wiring, everything that the mouse have, mice have chewed up.
So it's replacing the guts and moving up, it's not replacing the whole unit?
No, the units, the problem with that, the unit is actually so old now, it's going on, it's 14 years old roughly. I don't know how much longer we'll be able to get parts for it. And if we bought another one, you'd have to keep it the same so the condenser unit would match the heads. So we're at the point, if we can't get any more parts with this model, at some point, right now he has the parts, but at some point we may have to change that out, but that'll be a future capital improvement or whatever.
What is the potential cost for repair, total repair?
For this.
Total purchase.
Like replace it?
Oh, you're talking for future capital replacement?
Yeah, versus spending what we're spending today.
Triple of what this quote is, so.
Yeah, I was thinking probably 25.
Yeah, 25, right around here.
For something that size.
We're going to spend eight now.
And get.
And don't know what we're gonna get.
A few years out of it, five years hopefully.
As we get into the summer and all the block and the buildings is going to get warmer, that lab's going to heat up and it's going to be no good.
What are we doing in the interim is my other question.
Doors open.
For the lab before. Do they have the parts, do they have the parts in stock, ready to go?
Yes, he does.
Do we have a rough timeline on when they would do it upon approval?
Uh, he knows it's a, an emergency ASAP. Years ago, we lost the, one of the boards, mice had gotten in a few years back and they know the priority of it. They, they quickly got a board, I mean. Prior to COVID and everything, but right now he, he does have the parts on the shelf, so.
The only other question I had is, other than wall hanging, is there any other preventative measure we could do so that we're not continually chasing, watching mice destroy our boards and our wires?
Um, he made a recommendation, I, I guess there's a few places that he services that they put little vials, and I'm, I'm going to try it. Little vials of peppermint oil in there, the mice don't seem to like that. And the only other thing I, I was thinking is we've done it on one of the generators like at River Street. Get some fine mesh and try to take the panels off, backseal it against all the open grates and allow the air to flow through. But the mice should be able to get in there because they're only quarter inch holes.
Right, that, that's what I was wondering, I, because there was no breakdown of, of, other than just. A reinstallation and, and a hanging on the wall of preventative measure.
Right.
Is that something that you think we could do?
We'll be able to do that.
In-house or?
In-house, yes.
Okay.
Better mouse proofing in-house.
Okay.
The only one I had is said it's available to ship, so he doesn't have it there or they don't have it there. And it said freight costs will be added, so this isn't the total.
Well, it says that it's not, but then it also says, because I read the same thing. Cost does not include freight unless otherwise noted above. And if you look above on the, it's asterisk and it says includes freight.
Right.
Because I did the same thing.
Oh, I didn't go up far enough.
I did the same thing. All right, yeah. I was like, oh, what's the freight to get it here, but it's already there.
I got you.
So it's already included.
Thank you.
So that is the total cost then, 76.95.
Yep.
Okay.
Put the order in first thing tomorrow morning, they get shipments typically on Thursdays. There's a chance that it could arrive this week and allow them to do the install sooner than having to wait till next, next week.
Jim?
Just wanted to. Comment on Scott's comment about preventive measures and. I don't know if the town has one, if not, I would recommend an integrated pest management program. As this is not the only. Air conditioner or other places that could fall prey to infestation problems. We did have a very environmentally sound one at one of my previous employers and addressed infestation issues, damage issues like this.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment because that's where I was thinking is these, these get expensive if we have to keep chasing the infestation every, you know, five to 10 years. They should be lasting a little bit longer than that.
You can research a, a meds.
Yeah, yeah, I, we have one where I am too, it was kind of in the back of my head, thank you. But I don't think we have anything comprehensive. We might have some buildings that do a little bit, but nothing. To the level that may be.
Well, the.
Warranted.
The nice thing is.
We just spent $8,000.
Those programs are out there and they're very easy to research and implement. We don't have to recreate the, reinvent the wheel on that one.
And as I said, one of my prior employers, they have an environmentally conscious, conscious program.
Nice.
Yeah. Something to look at. Any questions, concerns, want to move forward as an emergent need?
I would move it forward as a emergent need. It's not gonna, it's not gonna get any cooler this summer and we need to make sure that we are able to run the lab.
Right, it's, my main concern is keeping the lab cool.
So if it takes a week or so, are we good? No matter what the temp is outside or do we need to take?
We've been down a week or so before when this happened, so.
You'll make it work?
We'll get through it. Just open the doors, put the fans here and there, just to try to keep it, keep the warm air or the cooler air if we can pull it in in the morning, just to keep it moving.
Yep.
Is it for the testing that that's a requirement?
Yes.
Is that something we could test at the other?
That we could do that?
That we could do the testing at the other wastewater station if needed? If there was a problem, do they have a lab that we could?
Some tests, some, some yes, some no. I mean, every plant does different tests, so.
Got it. Alright, I'm assuming we propose to spend it out of the maintenance line for now or do you have a capital line? I forget, you have a capital line, right? Okay. Which is 10? This is the bulk of it? We'll have to think about that before July of 2023 when the, if we're over.
I was gonna say.
Overspent suddenly.
A $10,000 line item for maintenance seems.
Well, no, this is capital because the maintenance line is more.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
And it's different. This is a capital line, right?
Right.
Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve. The condenser replacement and award the contractor Jamrog HVAC. For the amount of $7,695.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'll get that going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Was that, that was it, right? For you tonight?
I'm open.
Me too. Thank you. I believe that concluded regular business unless I skipped something.
You did. Liaisons and reorganization.
The stuff I said I'd come back to, huh?
Yep.
Good call. FY23 select board reorganization.
Mine's very simple, tag your it.
Guess I won't even say what I was gonna say.
Nope.
I'll say it anyway.
Okay.
I welcome either of you if you're interested in doing it, to do it. I have no problem if you don't and you wish me to continue.
No, I, I was, I was looking at it. I don't have the capacity now to put in the extra that it takes to, to run it. Unless you're at a point where you cannot. But.
Some days, but I know that both of you are there to help. Some days, but I know that both of you are there to help if we need to delegate stuff and I appreciate that. So no, I'm, I'm all right.
All right.
Most days.
So then just to make it formal, I will make a motion to nominate Jacob Smith as Chair of the Select Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got one more here in you.
And FY23 Select Board liaison assignments. So that being said, do we want to make any changes to liaisons from where they are now?
I don't have any concerns with the list as it is. Other than, now, if I'm not mistaken, we still have by name the Personnel Relations Board. We have no active-
No, as part of the, um, codification process, we were hoping to update the purby bylaws.
Right.
To address the concerns about the mission where you stopped appointing a few years ago.
Right.
And get, and get them back on track with where they should be with the statute.
Okay.
That had been our intention, so.
So you want to leave it there and it'll be brought back?
If, if that works for the three of you.
Yeah. That's fine. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything because I have not seen a, a purby in the last-
Probably about three years.
I was gonna say three to four anyways.
This has most of your boards and commissions on it. There's a few that are not and they typically just come to you when you, they need something. But these are the, the ones that are actively meeting on a regular basis and, and typically have business that need to interact with you all.
So, so Brian, under my list of liaisons, I did not sign the paperwork for reappearance to the cable advisory.
Yeah.
And, um, the reason I didn't sign it is because it's a 10-year contractual.
We're about to-
What?
Do the suggestion.
Go ahead.
You're referring to the franchise.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
So, so select member is referring to the franchise agreement process with the cable provider is a 10-year contract or 10-year license. The ascertainment process starts two years before the expiration. So you have a contract that expires in September of 2028. So early in 2026, we will begin that two-year negotiation process, polling the, the residents for what they're looking for in services and concerns. With that being said, that's typically yes where the cable advisory committee focuses on. Others also sometimes have a role in overseeing this process that we're doing now. And the three of you have been doing this and it made sense because we were launching it with the three of you. But I, I do wonder as we further develop and maybe get a three-year contract in place with a service provider and other boards and commissions, and all the school committees started recording their meetings recently and the goal is to continue to develop this. I wonder if there's maybe a, a change in mission or an expansion of the mission for the cable advisory committee to also help sort of offer some steering to this. I don't think it's that the select board shouldn't be involved in that, but I don't know that that's your regular operational purview to have to do that on top of regular business. And so I meant to bring that forward as a recommendation. So I'm glad you brought it up. I, I don't know who the right mix of people are and I don't know if I need to research a charge that would work for that. But I do know in other communities, there's maybe a broader mission or a group that helps steer this relationship with the community access TV portion.
I think, and you've been on a while and there's been a few other members off and on, but I think it lost steam. I don't know if we have any active members, or any now.
The other two members did the same as Bill. They didn't seek reappearance because they thought we won't be working on franchise agreements until 2026.
But I also remember a lot of discussion about getting to where we are right now. Or really close to, which is live broadcast.
Right.
On a channel as well.
Right.
So I know you did some work in the background to try to get to where we are now and, and over here. So I think that's an interesting idea. We're not gonna solve it tonight.
So just to add some more information to that, I'm willing to, to, to stay on for the length of my, my term, which I have one, one year left, less than one year left of my term. So, and which I don't plan on rerunning, so. And that's the other reason why I didn't initiate that process when I got the paperwork, so.
Right.
But I am willing to continue in line for, for the rest of my term.
Well, I think you can continue to be liaison and not be a member too if you, if you wish. You can stay the liaison and if we got a quorum and they met again, then just attend as liaison as needed or as it interests you.
I like the suggestion of, you know, revamping the charge to what the cable advisory, what the mission is because it has evolved from what it originally was or it could, it could be evolved.
Yeah.
Not saying it has. It has the potential to be involved, uh, evolved into a larger scope.
It makes sense because the franchise agreement provides the, the peg access of the community access portion. It makes sense for the two things to stay together. Right now it just sort of feels like once the cable advisory is done with their, their role in negotiating, their service is done for 10 years. And that, that's, I think, maybe what you're trying to articulate. And if we, if we broaden that, it gives a little more continuity to that group. So not only did they spend the time negotiating that portion of the contract, they also got to see the, the impact or the, the services and, and that would probably even inform future negotiations.
Right.
And I agree, I don't think it's necessarily something we have the bandwidth to just handle at the board level. To, to propagate that, right? We've talked a little bit about what else could we do with it.
Right.
You know, at a high level, but I don't know that any of us have the ability, you know, as the group to, to move that forward. But a cable advisory committee may.
So if I was to research maybe some updates to a charge to bring forward for consideration?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So stay as it is, is what I heard.
Yep.
Okay. Now I think we're actually done with business for tonight.
Now you are. I will issue that out to everybody.
There's nothing else?
Okay.
Thank you. I'll move, we adjourn at 8:51 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
It was nice to see people in the actual audience.
It is nice.
We, we don't get that very often.
It is, it is nice.